Call the meeting back to order. We call this meeting back to order. We convened at six o'clock for purposes of executive session to talk about negotiations with non-union personnel. Okay, so tonight, any public input from anybody? No? There's no student report tonight. I think we are going to, before we begin the business, slide in Mrs. Molly. I understand you were in Washington DC representing our school along with Dr. Daley and Mr. Bernard.
Yeah, we had a quick little trip down to Washington, actually Maryland. It was an honor to be there. It was very exciting. It was a really emotional time for me. I don't know about anybody else, but I got emotional a couple of times on the trip. I brought the award to show you.
Want to maybe pass it around, Chris?
So how long was the ceremony? Did everybody get, was it just like one long ceremony or were there a lot of different ones?
Yes, it was two days.
It was a two-day. Thursday were workshops and presentations and then Friday there was a luncheon and then the award ceremony.
Probably about, you know, give or take a thousand people.
Yep.
It was big.
Yeah.
Over a thousand people.
We saw people from Hawaii and Alaska.
Yep.
You know, it was nationwide. It was...
Those poor people went last.
Yeah.
They were called up last.
Where was the actual ceremony?
It was at the...
National Harbor, Maryland.
Yeah, National Harbor, the Gaylord National Convention Center. Beautiful venue.
Very, very nice.
And did Betsy DeVos present it?
She did not.
She was there on Thursday.
She was there on Thursday, but she did not come on Friday.
We had, there was an Assistant Secretary for Elementary Education that spoke. He was, I thought he was very good.
Mm-hmm.
He was a former college president. I don't remember his name now, but...
Frank Brogus?
Bond or something, yeah. It was, it was a nice, nice couple of days. I do, you know, want to take a moment to, Chris represented us very, very nicely. She had, I think it was a new outfit, right? Green and gold.
It was a green and gold outfit.
You wore her green and gold. Subtle gold, subtle gold.
And I will tell you that a number of people noticed that when they saw the picture.
If you see the, if you see the pictures on social media, please take note of her shoes.
Oh, yes, my green shoes.
Well, we, it was a very nice, you know, I was, I was happy that Patrick was able to join us too and it was, it was quite an experience. I, I had been told before we went down by a superintendent who's head of school in her district getting an award last year that she was not aware of how, quote unquote, "how big a deal it was" until she went to the, to the conference and, and the award ceremony. So I had that in the back of my head on my way down, but even with knowing that a little bit advanced notice, it was still pretty impressive. And to come together and celebrate this with people from across the country, educators from across the country, it was, it was among the proudest of moments I've had in my career. It was, you know, this is...
I would agree.
Yeah, this was, it's pretty special and I think the entire town, and I think we've been, you know, very cognizant to acknowledge that, you know, I think one of the things that we take a lot of pride in here is it's not all, it's never been about just one school.
Right.
I really do think it's a, it's a wonderful thing for the little school community certainly and, and, but I really do think it's wonderful for the entire, the entire town to celebrate because I think it, it's representative, I think, of, of, you know, the support that we get in our schools, our readiness of our children when they come to school, certainly the talented work of everybody that interacts with children in our schools, but, you know, certainly a highlight for the little school clearly, but I do think really the entire community can find great pride in it. And so we do have a formal ceremonies in the early planning stages. I've shared that all with you, but just a reminder, I think you've got to save the date too for January 27th. We have Governor Baker coming as well as some other elected folks, Bruce, Bruce Todd, Brad Jones. We're gonna, Chris is putting together a nice speaking program. We actually met today, talked a little bit about that and we think we're, a formal invitation will follow that, save the date notice going out sometime right after the Thanksgiving holiday. We think that'll give people enough planning, you know, seven or eight weeks or so, so. But a pretty, pretty special couple of days for sure.
You think your keys are still going to work on January 27th?
I'm hoping my FOB doesn't get deactivated, yeah.
We might, we might let you in.
I will be making the trip down for it, absolutely.
We, we also got a new flag. Fly outside the school.
Oh, that's very cool.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
Can you guys come, come around front?
Show it to the... I guess a photo of that one.
Look at that.
Yeah, I'm very excited.
And I think it's fair to say we're doing some other things too, Chris, right? We probably don't want to reveal right now what those are, but we're, we're gonna make sure that the little school is properly adorned for others, so.
I think it's the first, it's really the first time we've had to congratulate you personally and to, I know we've all spoken about this, but it's such a great accomplishment for you and the, and the school and I couldn't have been more thrilled when I heard.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. It's definitely a team effort and, you know, I'm aware from the school committee on down, we have wonderful support from you, the senior administrators could not be any more outstanding than they are and the community in general, the staff, the families, the PTO, all very generous, very supportive and I really do believe that, you know, everybody working together for the best interest of kids is what makes us who we are. So, you know, it's a testament to everybody's hard work, not just a handful of people, but, so thank you.
That's great, no?
Thank you.
I mean, and in spite of having three of my kids, they still won an award.
We won because of them, no.
Yeah.
I think that'd be nice.
And the photo, where, where is the, where is the plaque going to reside ultimately?
Well, that's a very good question. That question's been asked quite a bit today. Someplace in the front lobby. We don't know.
Chris, before you put it away, you should probably take a picture.
Maybe we'll do a picture for the, for the paper?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we, Chris, when I went over to the school this morning, Chris did have it out on a, kind of that table in the lobby on like a little stand.
Yeah.
But, you know, a more permanent home. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna also share with you, this was a packet that we got and it's, it's nice. There's a letter from the president in there. There's a listing of all of the schools across the country and you'll see a little bit about what the, what the two days involved. So if you want to just take a quick look at that. It was, it was, it was very well done. It was a very, very, very nice ceremony in all, yeah.
And, and yeah, I mean, I also know there was a lot of work that went into the application as well.
All of it.
That was appreciated as well.
Was a lot, a lot of detail.
Twenty-seven pages of questions.
Yes. So.
Jill, do you?
Yes, no questions.
Yeah. Perfect, okay. Patrick, you want to get it too?
Like it's angry. Kids for boy. I think I didn't hold it well.
Did you really want to do that?
Do you want to be in the center and hold it up or do you want to be at the middle?
Boys on this side, girls on this side.
That's what it looks like. Patrick, over closer to Janine. To balance it, yeah.
Can you step like this way to the center of this little notch?
Swallowing the hole. Can you see that?
Do I go to new business before continued or do I?
Do the policies, right? Want to get them out?
Only Patrick, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's...
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, let's just go to the continued business and finish this up. So we have second readings. Mr. McGowan, would you like to handle those quickly?
Sure thing, Mr. Chairman. I move that the school committee accepts for a second reading policy GBAB staff recognition.
I second the motion.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee accept for a second reading policy IDFA athletic policy.
I second the motion.
Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee accept for second reading policy IDFAC, Financial Management of Athletic Program.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And finally, I move that the school committee accept for second reading policy IECA Minimum Class Size.
I second.
Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you and now we're onto new business. We have a presentation on NRPS 2021 that, Mr. Bernard or Dr. Daley?
I don't know.
Okay.
Facilitate this one for you.
Should we move up?
If you could. It's rather brief, but sure, yeah. So thank you. While you get comfortable, I, it's been somewhat of a, maybe tradition's too strong of a word, but annually a presentation is made to the school committee and to the public on the strategic plan for the district. So NRPS 2021, we're entering year four. Hard to believe, but I'm happy to share with you tonight some, some updates as to work that has been completed and also what are some kind of larger focus areas for, for this school year. So just to kind of give you a little bit of a historical view, the book Strategy in Action was used when, when we came together as an administrative council and drafted really what was kind of the inaugural five-year strategic plan at the time, NRPS 2016. And that book continues to serve as kind of the guiding document for us as we, as we, as we work as a collaborative administrative council to, to kind of highlight those priorities for the school district. We have, we adopted back in 2016 kind of a vision and a mission for, for our district and that has stayed steady for what now is, is nine years, but kind of the bumper sticker, if you will, or kind of the short statement of vision that we have for our district is on the screen. The North Reading Public Schools prepare all students to be productive citizens who will thrive in the 21st century. And then similarly as our mission, we, we highlighted our dedication to excellence, service and lifelong learning as kind of those three tenets that we would, we would continually reflect upon and use in our, in our decision-making. We identified seven strategic objectives and they are, they are as follows. In your, in your packet you will see that each of them is linked to administrator standards and the present educator evaluation system and they fall under three larger areas, what we call strategy areas. Kathy Willis, who was superintendent before me, referred to these as kind of the big rocks and that image on the screen is designed to show that it's, it's the larger rocks that we really want to focus on and then the smaller pieces, the sand or the pebbles will follow. And the three major strategy areas for us are teaching and learning, technology integration and student support services. I don't want to read the slides to you that follow, but under the teaching and learning stands essentially, these focus in on, on curriculum, instruction and assessment. And I'm going to talk specifically a little bit later about what some of the initiatives are that we are engaged in presently and where we're going a little bit into the future. The second one is technology integration. Digital learning is, you know, I think, as my, my time is coming to a close, there are, there are two things that I have identified to folks who have talked to me about my career and, and one of those is the trajectory of digital learning. In a relatively short period of time, I have seen that trajectory, you know, it's a, it's a very, very sp, it's exactly, it's dramatic. And, and, you know, we have, I think, done a nice job of, in some ways, taking a slow and steady approach, but at the same time, you know, we have certainly, I think, been a leader in a number of areas and I'm proud of the work that gets done across the district in the digital learning realm. And we've also done a nice job, I think, as a district and Michael Connolly and Patrick Daley were very intimately involved with our Director of Digital Learning a couple of years ago when we secured a pretty sizable state grant that allowed us to upgrade the infrastructure at the three elementary schools that supports our digital learning work. And that was, that was no small feat for sure. And then student support services. So the umbrella here is, you know, everything that comes under this umbrella of student support services are the things that we do to, to support students and to create a safe learning environment for, for them and for their teachers. I think one of the nice things that we can point to in our strategic plan currently is that it is not a document that sits on a shelf and collects dust. If anything, it, it's just the opposite really. It's a very live document that every year, and I'm going to talk about this in a little bit more detail in just a moment, but every year goes through a, a pretty intense review with the administrative council and we work very hard to achieve a significant alignment with the goals of the school committee that you all adopt annually, the goals of the school improvement plans that are presented to you and to the public in June of each year for each of our five schools, the budget goals that, that the administrative council brings to you as a draft and then ultimately we work with you to finalize, and the goals of all of our, our educators. So the point here is that there's, there's connectivity, that we're not, we're not working in isolation in any one area, that all of us, the school committee, all of our educators, the administration, are coming together and achieving some, a pretty significant alignment with, with our efforts. And that, the hope here is that in doing so, if we're successful, that our students, our students will succeed. So a moment ago I spoke to you about the, kind of the annual review that takes place. So when, when the administrative council participates in its annual summer retreat, a significant focus, we come together two, sometimes three days and, and we spend a significant amount of time on the strategic plan. So these are just some photos of folks that, that were working kind of in our, in our subgroups this past summer at Endicott College. And the result of that is to take a look back a little bit on the year that just, that just concluded, the school year that just concluded and make adjustments to, to NRPS 2021. And at the same time, we might also make some minor adjustments going forward. So if you were to take a look at the plan, and I'm going to actually email this out to all of you tomorrow and it's going to be posted on the, on the website for the district. I didn't want to do that before tonight's presentation, but this, this is the actual document and it's about 60 pages now. And what you will see in the document is that each year, there's a key at the very end, each year, the edits that are made are in a different color type. This year we used kind of a, kind of a teal color, I think it was. But you will see colors, four different colors, one for each year throughout the document of the edits that we've made. And I think, you know, my hope is that you will be, you know, impressed with the level of detail that this, that this strategic plan has in it. And I think it has done a nice job for us in kind of charting a course, if you will, for the school district. So as we look to the current school year and where we are and the work that has already begun in, in some areas or work to be done in others in teaching and learning, kind of our objectives for this year, this year are to continue to look at the alignment of curriculum across all three levels, elementary, middle and high school. We continue to look at curriculum leadership and I think probably all of you as committee members will recall that there is a subcommittee made up of, of members of the North Reading Education Association, also known as the Teachers Union, and the, and the administration to, to kind of hammer out a model that we might ultimately want to present in the next round of contract negotiations with the teachers to get, to kind of enhance our, our educational leadership in, in the area of curriculum. There, there is a, the educator evaluation system, which has undergone some, some revision, that we will implement the, the new rubric to be used to evaluate staff and that too is being worked on with a, a subcommittee in a pretty collaborative way. We have the School Star Times Advisory Committee that Dr. Daley is spearheading along with Mr. McGowan and some interested parents and staff. State standardized assessment, the also known as MCAS 2.0 continues to be a major focus for us. And we are in year five of having introduced data teams at our, at our five schools with somebody that is, is appointed a stipended position to kind of work with the administrator at that school and teachers to, to unpack the data that comes in particularly around the MCAS testing. In the technology integration area, these are some highlights that, that we have either begun looking at or will look at. I want to call out on this slide that because of two years of funding through a state grant largely through the efforts of, of Representative Brad Jones, State Representative Brad Jones, we have been able to expedite the implementation of the one-to-one model. So this year we have grades seven through 12, students in all of those, all of those grades with a, with a school department issued Chromebook device, a lot of professional development with teachers. And it's really interesting to hear from students about how frequently their Chromebooks are being used as, as educational devices. It's a good story that I hear and, and we see it when we visit schools. Again, going back to my point of a few minutes ago, that the, the trajectory of digital learning initiatives has been significant and I think this, this speaks to that as well. You might recall back, some of you will at least, if you were on the committee at the time, that in January of, of 2018, we had a pretty comprehensive presentation from our Director of Digital Learning, Dan Downs, with our, with our technology plan and it's a, it's a pretty, a pretty impressive document for sure. In the area of student services, so a lot going on. I mean, social emotional learning is, is permeating our schools. I think there's a lot of good work going on across all five schools, the three elementary schools, the middle school and the high school, to support students to, to work with staff on, on social emotional learning initiatives. If you, if you follow of any, any of our schools on social media, there's a lot that gets posted about some of the work that's going on that's pretty interesting. In the summer of 2018, we hosted a, a summer retreat. It started with a summer, a summer retreat on social emotional learning. We had 30 people, teachers and administrators participate and we kind of trained to be ambassadors going back into the schools to work with staff. That work continued into the school year of that year, 2018-19 and continues today. We have the PAWS Committee, which, Public Awareness and Understanding of Social Education, which has been in existence for probably, it's got to be 10 or so years anyway. It's been a long time, doing some good, good work. So again, I don't want to just read the slides to you, but my, my point in here is to highlight for you some of the major initiatives. School safety and security, and there's more to be said than just on this slide too, but that continues to be something that we work pretty diligently on and is kind of at the forefront of our work on, on a very, very regular basis, if not daily, certainly, certainly, you know, pretty, pretty regularly for sure. We had a school safety summit, as some of you know, just, just last week. So these, these are some additional focus areas that don't really fit under any one of the three strategies, but things that we're just continuing to look at and be mindful of. So the curriculum leadership, we continue to look at staffing and making sure that we have student teacher ratios that are appropriate and allow for maximum learning opportunities, student support positions, paraprofessionals, those are the, the kinds of positions that we're, we're speaking about when we talk about student support positions. Our STEM and STEAM world are pretty, are pretty expansive. We're looking to do more work, as you know. You supported a, a two-year initiative with year one this year in, in expansion of our World Languages Program at the middle school. Digital learning certainly continues to be a major focus. Social emotional learning will continue to be a focus. Parent University, Dr. Daley wants to continue the Parent University Initiative after two years, which is, which is exciting and I, we don't have a date for that yet, but as you can imagine, you know, there's a lot going on with the transition, but I know that, I know that that will be something that the community will appreciate and that Patrick will be, will be working on as one of many things as he, as he takes over in January. I think it's important on school safety to do a little bit of a call out on, and it was mentioned on an earlier slide just a couple ago, that we also, in addition to the money that we received for the advancement of the one-to-one initiative, that Brad Jones, Representative Jones, was also extremely helpful in securing $175,000 that we used in the district to complete a number of school safety initiatives. And they are listed on the, on the slide here. There's a, there's a couple of other things that I'm really, I'm not comfortable speaking about publicly because of the nature of what they are and it just, it doesn't make sense to talk and reveal that, but a lot of what you see here on the slide captured the bulk of that money, but there were a few other little things that we did as well. But, and, and much of this took place at the elementary schools and although not exclusively, but it was, it was because this building was newer and didn't need some of the upgrades that the elementary schools did, particularly in the, the first item you see about the, the security cameras. We either added or upgraded security camera systems at the, at the three elementary schools. We upgraded the controlled entry systems at our schools and this, this building, the middle high school did, was actually the beneficiary of one of those projects. We had a number of interior and exterior doors at the, at the elementary schools that were, I would, I would characterize them as just not functioning in the way that we wanted them to function. They were either sticky, you know, stuck to get out and didn't allow for an easy access outside, or they, you know, they, they had rotting door jams that made the potential for somebody that wanted to get into the school without authority could maybe do so more easily. So we replaced, I think it ended up being about 11 of them across the three elementary schools. We had interior classroom and office door locks installed throughout the three elementary schools. We have an upgrade to our public safety and intraschool communication systems with the, I'll call them walkie-talkies, that's what, you know, their communication radios. We purchased additional AEDs, defibrillators for all five schools. We have universal precaution kits, which are kind of like an emergency medical kit, provided to every staff, every classroom in the district across all five schools. And then you see the, the radios. So that's my update for you. My hope is that you can see that, you know, a lot of good work continues. I know, I know that Patrick shared with you at, at the last meeting that he is going to tackle a new strategic plan very early on in his tenure and I think that's, that's great. It's a, it's a, it's a lofty task, you know, it's, it's a lot to do, but he's got a good team around him that works very hard and recognizes the, the value of the strategic plan and, and helping us to, to secure funds that we need in order to do the work that we, we want to do. But more importantly, I think it, it charts a direction and it makes it much more, it makes it much easier to, to make decisions when you can point to something that maps out why it is we're talking about the things that we want to do. Why are we doing the work we're doing? It's because we've mapped it out in our strategic plan. And I think we have a good record over the last nine years of having, having stayed pretty true to our strategic plan and not veered from that very often. And I think that's been a good thing. I think it's been helpful to us. Those of you on the school committee that have sat in finance planning team meetings with the administration know that the, the folks on the municipal side of government talk about NRPS 2021 and understand what it is. And that has been extremely helpful too, so. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions? Mr. McGowan?
Yeah, I would just say, just to touch on what you were saying at the end, John, that, that strategic planning in an organization is really part of, needs to be part of the culture to be effective. And it does seem like for the last nine years, it really has been a part of the culture. And, and when you say that the plan is, you know, referred to all the time and is constantly a part of discussion, I mean, that's, that's what it's all about, is having that plan in place. So that's kind of a general comment, but...
I agree. I've seen, I've seen the results of that and it is, it's, it's very helpful.
Yeah.
You know, people know that we, we've been thoughtful and mindful about where we want to be at the end and, and it's helped us to get there. I'm, you know, when you, and my hope is that you will find some time, and it is, it's an extensive document, 60 or so pages, but my hope is that you will find some time to go through it. And I don't mean read it, you know, page for page, but particularly in the column that's labeled comments, that's where you, you will see the things that we have realized. And that's, sometimes that gets long. And that's, sometimes that gets lost a little bit, I think, when we get into a budget discussion or a budget deliberation, but when we look back and say, okay, but the reason we were fighting so hard last year, oh yeah, we did get those two or three extra positions and it's been helpful.
Other comments? I would, first and foremost, I'd thank you for presenting this and for your leadership over the course of this strategic plan. A couple of quick comments I would just say is, you mentioned a little bit about the budget. What I think I've been very impressed with is, I feel like you guys have always, you know, I think the leadership team with, you know, Mr. Bernard, Dr. Daley, you know, Michael as well, and Mr. Connolly about being able to get a lot of bang for the buck, you know, while we, you know, we understand that there are limits to what we can get. I think the town has been appreciative of the planning. I think a lot of other departments are being asked to create the same sort of documents that the schools have created for the last few years. And I think there's always been a priority of making sure there's impact on the students, but, you know, doing it in a way that is efficient and, you know, I think that's, it's incredible to be able to do both. And I think that's one of the things I've been most impressed with is how much you can get for the dollars of the positions that are added. And so I think that's great. And just overall, when you talk about teaching and learning, what I've always liked with you, Mr. Bernard, is I feel like the teaching and learning goes from the top all the way down. And so I feel like, you know, teaching and learning can be leadership as well. And so I think you've done a very good job of teaching, you know, the people that work for you as well. And I think a lot of the people, we've got a great administrative staff and so I think that shows through. And so, I mean, in the last year, we've all been focusing a lot on the transition that's coming up, but again, I mean, the teaching and learning starts at the top and it has been going the whole time. And so I just, I think it's been great. I think it's great to have an overall goal of where you want to get to and be able to map it out. And, I mean, I just, even though, I mean, we started the night by talking about one of our schools winning a national award, but we're still constantly looking at ways that we can improve. You know, even if there's, you know, 1% of students that are failing and are struggling in one area, we're still focusing on how to fix that 1%, you know, that issue. And so, I just appreciate the love of work that you put into this, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate those observations. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Great.
So, thank you very much. I don't think we need any vote on this one. We have one more presentation.
No, we do not, sir.
Mr. Connolly.
Yeah. Michael, you need to. Very good. So I do have a PowerPoint. I'm going to move through it relatively quickly. I don't think, you know, the information's kind of been in the packet. There was a report with a PowerPoint that captures the kind of salient points of enrollment projections. You know, we kind of go through this every year around this time, October 1, enrollment has been certified at the end of October. And those are the numbers that we typically really use to sort of kick off the process of looking at enrollment, certainly next year and then over the next, you know, five to 10 years. It is a process that's very important that it gets done on an annual basis because different changes in the numbers and the actuals will have an impact on subsequent years. So, you know, we certainly use the, what we refer to as the progression ratio, and that's essentially looking at historical data and what's kind of making the assumption that what's happened in the past will continue to happen in the future. It is a method that's served us well. We've been pretty accurate over the last number of years, mainly because, you know, the ratios of in and out migration of students in North Reading and the birth rates and information's been relatively stagnant over the last, you know, 10 years. So we can certainly look at what's happened in the past and then also look at what's going on in the market, in the real estate market and residential development and make some adjustments and get a pretty, pretty good handle on what we can, you know, predict in the future. So that's kind of the process we go through. First couple of charts take you through some history. This goes back all the way to 1950. You can see kind of two somewhat bell curves that were in existence, you know, enrollment peaking, you know, back, you know, as we approached around 1970. And then it certainly dipped and then now we're back, we're back on a relative rise, you know, in the late, early 2000s. Current enrollment is at 2,397 and although there has been fluctuations in the enrollment amongst the grade levels, believe it or not, our October 1 enrollment number is the same as last year. So again, just another quick look at our history, this time, just over the last 10 years, so you can see kind of the downward, you know, projection. No significant reductions over the last, you know, three or four years, but we have been certainly, enrollment's been somewhat on a moderate decline over the last five years. When we look at our projections into the future, you can certainly see that enrollment is going to continue to decline or is projected to decline over the next, you know, three to five years before we start to see an increase again in 2025. Certainly, I think the two greatest factors that have had an impact in the past and we think will continue to have an impact in the future is certainly your birth rates and what the birth rates are doing over the next five or 10 years. And those have been relatively, you know, stable, ranging between 140 and 160 annual births a year. We think that's a trend that will continue, but that's something that certainly plays a large factor when predicting enrollment into the future, as well as when we look at certainly the changes in in and out migration. And we've seen evidence of that economy in the real estate market improving. The turnover of homes has been on a somewhat of a moderate increase in North Reading. There's some developments happening. So those are all types of, as that economy improves and the real estate market picks up, which has been evidence of that over the last three to five years, those are all things that certainly can impact these enrollment projections going forward. So when you look at our projected in-grade combinations, we certainly look at enrollment on a pre-K and through 5 basis, grades 6 through 8 and grades 9 through 12, and then certainly district-wide enrollment. You can certainly see what's predicted over the next, you know, five to 10 years. And the biggest impact, and it's highlighted here, that is going to impact North Reading and this is no different than previous presentations. Certainly, the drivers are certainly the same, and that's been this way over the last three to five years that we've looked at enrollment, is going to be at the high school level. So certainly, you know, K through 5 enrollment's going to be relatively stable, some minor changes amongst the grade levels mainly driven by some changes in birth rates and what's going to be happening at the kindergarten level. Grade 6 through 8 will be relatively stable, will go up a little bit the next two years and then we think it's going to level off around 540 students. And then at the high school level, we're sitting at 740 students and we're predicting that's going to drop below 700 for the first time in several years next year and then certainly stay below the 700 amount for the next number of years, sort of leveling off around 685 or 690 students. When we look at the elementary level, we're seeing enrollment's predicted to increase. I would say that, this is, to me, this enrollment certainly kicks off the budget process in a lot of ways because certainly when we put together a level services budget, the biggest driver of this is going to be these changes in enrollment and how that's going to impact staffing levels and class sizes. So when we look at our elementary enrollment, it's relatively stable, but I think the biggest thing to look at from a budget perspective at this point would be what's certainly happening at the kindergarten level. The birth rate statistic is down. We had certainly, we knew we were going to have high kindergarten enrollment this year based on a higher birth rate for those cohort of students that were born five or six years earlier. The numbers indicate that that's going to drop. Just how much that will drop is always the most difficult number to predict. That 180 number is always, is probably the most challenging number to predict and try to get right. So just how much that will be different than this current year enrollment will be, won't be known really until about the middle of February. But we certainly know we're going to experience an increase at the grade 1 level. And then there's minor changes and adjustments between grades 2 and grade 5. So just looking at this, it is possible that we may need some additional staffing at the elementary level despite only the 10 student increase between K through grade 5 because of the, you look at across the three schools, those fluctuations between each grade. But certainly grade 1, you know, looks like some additional staffing will be needed there. And because these numbers range across, you know, three schools, you know, we don't know if any additional staffing will be able to be shifted to grade 1. So I think the biggest variable here is what's going to happen with that kindergarten number. So the middle school, you know, I think we're certainly going to be on an increase next year because of the grade 8 making its way, which is the lower cohort of students making their way to the high school with the larger incoming class moving in. That will be the increase at the middle school level next year, but then we do think it will go up for a couple of years and then we do see it stabilizing when we get to the three to five year timeframe. As I said earlier, the biggest change will be at the high school level. We knew this was coming. We knew there was a bubble of students that made its way up from the middle school onto the high school. So we knew that the high school was going to, around this timeframe, going to reach a year where it eventually dropped below 700 where it'd been, you know, previously. And we do think it will kind of level out and stay here around 690 students. And between the high school being leveling off around 690 students and the middle school being around that 540 range, I think we're right into, we're going to be right at that level where we thought we would be when we built this building, you know, somewhere around, you know, 1,400 students. So we'll be, we'll be right, right there. So when you look at across the, kind of the big picture, you know, what's happening, and again, this just kind of shows you the same drivers at play between, you know, middle school and elementary enrollment relatively stabilizing and the biggest change happening at the high school. I've mentioned this in the before, but it's certainly still true that over the last five or six years, I think in large part with the opening of the high school and middle school building, that that progression ratio of eighth grade students moving on to ninth grade has certainly been much different than it was previously. We're looking at an average around 94 students continue on to the high school in North Reading where several years ago it was 87%. So that's still at play. So what can you just summarize from the data? Again, district-wide enrollment expected to experience a moderate decline over the next five years before we see a start, an increase again. Again, the greatest change in enrollment is anticipated to take place at the high school. We will see enrollment dip below 700. Middle school and elementary enrollment, both moderate changes with, but relatively stabilizing. And like any type of projections, this is most accurate over the next three to five years. We'll look at changes in the real estate market and several other factors that will certainly have an impact on in-migration to North Reading. We think there's evidence of that picking up, so that could change some of these numbers in, over the long term. And we'll just continue to certainly to monitor this process on an ongoing basis. But that's where kind of the numbers are at, at this point. And I think we'll really, from a budget perspective, keep in our eye on, as we begin the budget development process in fiscal '21, looking at enrollment and seeing at that elementary level, that kindergarten grade 1, what's the impact there? You know, we certainly want to protect always a key budget priority to protect elementary class sizes at, in the primary grade certainly, but, you know, we'll be watching how that, what that impact is next year.
Thank you very much. Questions? Ms. Embriano.
Along with the way that the methodology progression, do you have contact with, like, the municipal side?
Do, yeah.
About new developments coming up?
I do. So I do meet or conference call with Danielle McKnight, the town planner, in her office and get, try to get a sense, and I know there's a report that she publishes, that she published a year ago, try to get a sense of what's coming down in the pipeline and if I can get a sense of what may be, may be opening and when, then we try to make adjustments to those ratios, those progression ratios, you know, based on what type of data we have at that time.
That's good, thank you.
Is it, as a follow-up to that, these projections do not include any large new developments that are being proposed?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. It's kind of based on what's known. I know there's a couple of proposals down the line, so if that were to come to fruition, that could certainly impact some of these numbers.
Yeah, that would bring the numbers up and most likely the staffing requirements.
Yep.
Other questions? My only other question, I mean, can you walk us through the progression rate? I'm kidding. Can we?
Calculations.
I know years ago, there used to be, used to assume that there was a number of students that would leave between middle school and high school.
Right.
I know when this building was built, the projections changed.
Correct.
I mean, what do we see now? I mean, do we see many or any students that are leaving?
Right. So historically, prior to this building, that progression ratio, you can almost bank on that being about 87, 88%. So that, the loss of students from eighth to ninth grade was on average 12%. When we look over the last five or six years, that average has changed where we're up to about 94%. And that's generally what's used in this, in this projection. And that's been pretty consistent. We've had years where it's been as high as 96, 97, or those students have moved on. I think the lowest it's been, has been about 91%. But I think, you know, that average has certainly gone up about 7%.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Connolly.
Thank you.
Okay. And for the three people watching at home, if you didn't get enough of the school committee policies.
Part two, well, we like to have it split out.
Yes, we like to, we like to split up the fun, so. We have part two of the school committee policies.
Exactly.
Gentlemen, would you like to lead us on this?
Yeah, do you want to, Rich, you want me to?
Yeah, I've got them written for me. I move that the school committee accept as a first reading policy JIBB Student Advisory Committee.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion on this? And this is just really looking at the election or the?
Yeah.
When it happened, right?
We, really, yeah. This ties into the subsequent policy change, but it made sense to shift the election to be in the fall for reasons we'll get into in a moment.
Okay. No discussion? No more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And I move that we accept for first reading the policy JIBB-R Student Advisory Committee Procedures.
Second?
Okay, and again, any discussion?
Just a couple of, I guess, clarification on the third bullet of the first under-election. It says the remaining seats will be filled from the student body at large. Why did we withdraw two seats? Is it because?
Initially, it had been that there are five seats and there still are five seats.
Okay.
It had been a sophomore, a junior, a senior, and then two of any class.
Okay.
But to make it a better balance now, it's a freshman, a sophomore, a junior, a senior, and therefore there's just one extra seat left over to maintain the five.
And that's allowed because they've been, the practice has been that they do the elections in the fall as opposed to in the spring before the freshman class arrives.
Okay.
Right.
Which was the reason for the change in the?
And precisely. Why we changed it, yeah.
Right.
This is more reflective of the practice.
Exactly.
That's kind of been one of the advantages of the policy subcommittee.
Yep.
Yeah, really, one of the keys.
You've got to go one or the other. Either change the practice or change the policy.
Good, right, exactly, yeah.
And then under Student Advisory Committee Functions and Responsibility, it says to meet with the superintendent on a monthly basis. You scratched that and made it regularly. So what's regular, just out of curiosity?
So I typically meet with, and I think this will continue, I typically meet with the student representatives on the day of a school committee meeting. So that's typically twice a month.
Okay.
So, but it's not always once, it's not always twice a month. So regularly it was the?
Out of curiosity.
Yep, no, it's a fair question. Yep.
It would be easy to get their thoughts on.
I meet with them more than once a month, I think is what's the point. You what? I'm sorry.
So it'd be easy to get their thoughts on things if they wanted to. Okay, any more discussion on the policy?
I would just point out that all, everyone's able to attend school committee meetings, so.
Correct. Okay, so there's no more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Correct. Okay, so there's no more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Light schedule tonight. Minutes of the meeting. Does anybody want to handle the minutes for us?
I will. I read through them, so I make a motion to accept.
La di da.
Going to justify why you want to accept them.
No. Well, you know, I wanted to be known that I did read through it, you know, it's not just willy-nilly.
I'd like it to be known I, too, read through them.
All right, good. So then you can second it.
You have to make the motion first.
I know.
I make a motion to accept the executive session November 4, 19, or sorry, 2019 minutes as written.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Any corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I will also make a motion to accept the regular open session minutes of November 4, 2019 as written.
Did you read these?
I did.
A second.
Okay, any discussion or corrections on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. There's no budget update?
Correct.
Nothing update?
Correct.
Bids and donations? We have two of them, or two versions, or an addendum to it, one additional one.
Yes, one came in today, so I'm trying to squeeze that one in for approval, too. That's the $150 one.
So I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $300 from the J. Turner Hood Parents Association to be used towards grade 1 and grade 3 field trips at the hood school.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $300 from the J. Turner Hood Parents Association to be used towards grade 4 field trips at the hood school.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $2,500 from Mira and Robert Reynolds to be used towards music-related items at the hood school.
Second? Any discussion?
That's very generous.
Incredibly generous.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And last one, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $150 from Jeff and Kirsten McClellan to be used towards sweatshirts for the track team at the high school.
I second.
Any discussion?
It's cold, so they need, they definitely need them.
There we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
That's great, yeah.
Okay. Subcommittee updates, finance planning team. Ms. Embriano, would you like to give an update? Oh, I don't bring notes.
We got a revenue report, a year-to-date type of report.
Yeah.
We talked about the project on Lady Island Street. Yep.
Yep.
We went through the, we went through the list that the select board has done, and there are changes to what they want to do. They've completed the project for LED lights. We did bring up, we did bring up that Barberry Street is very dark at the little school, and they're going to, Mr. Gilberto followed up with me afterwards and said that they're going to replace a light or fix a light that's out, and they're going to add in one additional light so that that street after, after things at night, that'll be better lit.
Yeah. Yeah.
Something school-related, really. I mean, it was just looking at, I mean, overall with the revenue.
We're early in the budget development process, so it was relatively uneventful meeting.
Yeah.
Informative, but nothing.
Right.
I mean, I think the only other thing that would potentially be impacting was Mr. Connolly brought up that because of a change of Medicaid, the way that it works, there's some concern that some of the revenue that we anticipated may not be, may not, may not show up, so that could impact our budget slightly this year. But to be determined from the government.
Yeah, we're gathering. Gathering more information on that, yeah.
Yep. But no, I mean, it was a pretty easy meeting.
Yeah.
They're waiting for Mr., they're waiting out Mr. Bernard before they give any serious things this year.
Liz should be back.
And one more meeting? Yes, Liz should be back, yeah.
And then subcommittee schedule. So November 19 at 10:00 a.m. at the police station, the Substance Abuse Coalition is meeting. Fine Arts Subcommittee is meeting November 20 at 2:30 p.m. in the superintendent's conference room. NORCAM Board of Directors, November 21, 7:00 p.m. at the NORCAM office. Policy Subcommittee, November 25 at 3:45 p.m. in the superintendent's conference room. The Athletics Subcommittee, December 11 at 12:30 p.m. in the superintendent's conference room. The Finance Planning Team, December 13 at 8:15 a.m. at Town Hall. Administrative report? Any administrative report?
Nothing additional, Mr. Chairman.
So, future business. So December 9 at 6:30 p.m., we're going to have our meeting. Couple of notes on this meeting.